Our regular meeting of the Board of Education, Scotia Glenville, will commence at 7:10. And I ask that folks rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I was gonna say that. Karen, do you mind moving our agenda for folks, even though we all probably have it up? First on our agenda is the hearing fluid to the floor, which we won't be doing because of the remote. But I did want to just let folks know that I did have a request and from a few folks from Lincoln, who are going to present to us at our next meeting. So we can expect a few visitors at our next meeting from Lincoln. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's comments. Susan?
Evening, folks. I am going to turn my time to my colleagues and collaborators from Tangible Development. I know Bree is on tonight. I don't know if LB is joining us, but we are prepared to give you an update. So Bree, whenever you're ready.
Excellent. So LB is here, but does not screen sharing paneling. So I think is able to talk, but not be seen in the same way. So we're both present. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you all. Let's see if this will work. That's fun. Hmm. Ah. Ah ha. I should be able to do this now. Nope, he hates me. Try one more time. And if not, Karen, I'm going to turn it over to you in one second if this doesn't work.
Sounds good.
Karen, I think I have to turn it over to you. This requires something my computer won't cooperate with.
No problem. You just tell me when to move slides and.
Absolutely. So I've not practiced with Karen as my Vanna White, but I very much appreciate the assist. So I wanted to come tonight, and I'm here with my colleague LB. I think y'all have met us in various contexts. When I'm fancy, I'm Dr. Brianna Becker, also Dr. LB Hannes. But in almost every situation, we're just Bree and LB. And tonight, we're here to give you, or really I'm the talker, but some preliminary results from the survey, from the employee survey, to give you a quick update about employee focus groups, and then to talk about part two of the project as we move to working with parents and students and the broader community, and talk a little bit about feedback and how you might get involved if you're interested in being more involved. So, next slide. Right, so this is working right with the Siena College Research Institute. We just wanted to share some preliminary data. There's tons more data out of this. There'll be complex, long reports and presentations as we're in deeper, but we wanted to give you a peek at some of the first pieces. Slide. So we had a really great response rate for the survey. 311 respondents, so that's 58% of all of the district's employees, right? Not just, this isn't just teachers, obviously. This is the broad spectrum of folks employed. And this is a, this is a pretty high response rate, especially for an organization this size. So we got a really rich sample here. And then, as you'll see on the next slide, I wanted to share with you one of the things that comes out of the DI CAT, out of that survey, the tolerance thermometer. And this is one way of understanding what the environment is like in the district, right? So, and this is looking, while I suspect folks answered the question thinking about broadly the folks who might be in their schools, we're really looking most specifically in the data we collected here at the experience of employees, right? So employees who hold these identities. And so this is a 10-point scale. Zero is threatening, right? Like this place is terrifying. I absolutely would not go here if I had any choice. Five is accepting, but not welcoming. So like, you know, often what we might call tolerating, right? Like, you could be here, but, and 10 is fully inclusive. I so far have never seen anybody receive a zero, like any group receive a zero from an organization, or even anything very close to a zero. And we've also never seen a 10, right? That's not a real thing. Nothing is sort of like perfect in that sort of way. Obviously, we're striving for 10, but knowing that that's not necessarily like the actual end goal. And you can see, so this is, these are folks evaluating the environment of the district for each of these populations. And one of the things I want to note as we look through this is that some folks are evaluating their own experience when they answer this, right? For some of these populations, they are part of these populations. And some of the questions everyone is answering, right? Because nobody has all of these things. They are assessing what it is like for people who are not them, right? For groups that they don't belong to. So I'd need something to keep in mind. At the top, right? So we see this typically divided about in thirds, as we understand it. It's at the top, we see totally unsurprisingly, white folks, men, folks with high socioeconomic status, military and veteran, women, and folks who have Christian religious or spiritual identities or beliefs. So, right, this is this sort of top third. Then we see this middle third, starting with people with disabilities, folks who are parents or caretakers, people of color, people of low socioeconomic status and English language learners. So folks whose first language isn't English. And then in this bottom third, and this is not a perfect like division of third, 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 but rather, right? So we're sort of hitting different markers in the numbers. We see folks who aren't Christian, who have religious or spiritual beliefs that are from some other tradition. LGBTQ folks, transgender folks are evaluated separately. People who aren't US citizens. And at the very bottom, we see transgender people. This is a little lower than we see transgender folks typically. So this is, that's a noteworthy finding. The other piece I want to draw your attention to is the standard deviation. For those of you, so I know that in this group, I have data analysts, like people who are professional, people who work with statistics, and folks who probably have not thought about statistics since like the last time they were forced to in a classroom. So if I am explaining something you know, know that I probably know you know that, but that we're looking at this from very different sort of familiar to go stats. So standard deviation is the difference in the answers, right? How far apart answers were. And the thing that's particularly noteworthy here, and is often the case, is that the standard deviation gets much larger the lower the number gets. There's way more disagreement about what the experience is like for populations as we see those numbers in like the 2.34, 2.56, 2.69. Much larger standard deviation there. Folks don't agree, right? There, folks are, we're seeing much more disagreement all the way up at the top, right? There's very little difference in the way people answered that, how the experience is for white people. So we're also seeing, right, really meaningful differences in how much people are sort of in unison, right, have a united opinion about what this experience might be like. And the final thing that I would note, right, as we circle back to the idea that some folks are value, some of this is evaluating their own experiences, some of it is evaluating experience of others, is that folks tend to overestimate how good it is for groups they don't belong to, particularly if those are marginalized groups. Not a universal truth on an individual level, but population wise, that's a thing we see with some frequency. I want to pause for a second. And then, yeah, actually, go ahead. Show me the X one. So here's another way of looking at this. Um, this is, so this is the same data, right? Nothing, I'm not showing you anything you didn't just see on the previous slide. This is it as a sort of heat map, right? The top third, right, Christians through white folks. In the green, the yellow, we see people with disabilities. Down to that very edge, right, English as a learned language. And then this bottom sort of red-orange third, we see the folks in that final third. And I presented to you this way partially just because it helps you see it in a different light, and partially because in understanding the organization with this data, the sort of way to reorient your brain and in understanding this is to see seven as your zero, right? This is, that's the worst, like, that's the least welcoming that your environment is. And that's who's closest to having that least welcoming experience, right? And then you can sort of see where 10 is at the other end. It remains where it was. So sort of reorienting this because seven is not usually indicative of actually like hurrah. Seven is often indicative, these kind of numbers are often indicative of an issue, right? And it's often in the thermometer, the relationship to one another and the sort of sequence is more important than the raw numbers. I want to pause and make, see if folks have questions about this before I sort of move us to a different piece of this.
Just go ahead, folks.
I don't have a question about this, but I was wondering if we could get this imprinted and sent to us because I can't read it on my screen.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. Yeah. And I totally understand that. If you're looking at a little screen, totally fine. Yeah. We can make sure that you can get this later. All right. So we'll have question time at the end too. So if you think of something, please feel like you can ask it then too. So, next slide, Karen, please. So I want to share with you where we're at. This is focus group participants as of like this second. Employee focus groups. We've had 60 folks participate. This is a slightly low number, and I think we can attribute that to a variety of things, including the crossover with contract negotiations. But this is still, right, a sizable population, and we still have two, next slide. Upcoming focus groups, so there'll probably be a few additions to this total group by the time we're done. And these are the two remaining employee focus groups to save a sense of where we're at. We're almost done collecting employee data. We'll wrap up as sort of we wrap up the month. And then we will be moving to part two of the project where we start to move out of the employee sphere and into the larger community sphere. Next slide, please. Awesome. So part two brings us to students and parents and community, right? So what will we be doing? We're going to be running a student survey. We piloted the survey with not your students, but students who are the right age. Your grade seven through 12, to make sure that it made sense to them, that the language made sense, that it didn't take, you know, a lifetime. We're working on making it shorter. Turns out it takes tweens and teens longer to take surveys than adults. So we're making some adjustments there. But overall, well received by that age group and piloted with the age group so that we had a real sense of what that would look like with youth. We built that custom for the students. We'll be doing student focus groups. Student focus groups, again, grade seven through 12, so kids in grade six through like and under, right, through K or pre-K, aren't included in data collection. They're too young. There's a whole bunch of concerns. And so while their parents will be welcome to be part of the parent stuff, kids that young are not included in data collection. So, and with focus groups, right, we'll be focus grouping with seventh and eighth graders together, middle school, and then the ninth or 12th graders together, high school. So that we're, we're having, you know, age appropriate kinds of divisions and conversations here. The survey is the same through seven through 12, but they'll take it individually. So that piece doesn't, like, there's not a need for differentiation there. And these will take place largely during school time. The survey will be happening in a classroom setting so that students have the opportunity to participate. The community survey is also a custom-built survey, right, for your community, but geared towards adults. Looking for parents and non-parents, parents of current students, parents of former students, people who went to the school system themselves, people who just live there. The sort of wide understanding of community, but closed only to folks who have a real connection to Scotia Glenville. Right, this is not, we're not looking to see, you know, folks who live on the other side of the state or even in like another community in this part of New York's thoughts about your community. We're looking to see your community's thoughts about your community. And then we're also going to run a handful of parent focus groups open to parents of current students of any age, but current students in the district. Next slide. And then what is that schedule going to look like? So now, through mid-April, you are seeing us right now in communications, building up interest and buy-in, doing a fair amount of preparation and some staff training, since we'll have teachers proctoring the survey, right, like while we're actually delivering it, they will be the people physically present because of the way school works. You know, adults to be the staff member from y'all to be with us in focus groups. And then also just getting employees on board, having them have a sense of what's happened with the employee data, where we're going, what's happening next, having a chance to have virtual or in-person FaceTime with folks. March through April, we're going to have an intake form to sign up for the community survey. Because an open link to a survey could lead us to get thousands of replies from some community in like, you know, Texas or something. Not desirable, doesn't really tell us anything about y'all. The system we're going to use is that we're going to widely advertise a sort of signup intake form. Folks will sign up. That will allow us to have a sense of who's in the data pool and at least have a chance of trying to screen out folks who don't belong there. It also then gives us an email list to send the survey out to. After that point, the data is anonymous, right? We have no idea who fills it out and who doesn't. I don't know what that looks like, but we do know who the general population is, which is true whenever we do surveys, right? Employees, every employee receives it, and then we just know what percentage of folks filled that out. And then true data collection, right? So the intake form isn't really data so much as it's a way for folks to gain access to the community survey. Starting after spring break, we will be going into real data collection. So running the focus groups, the surveys will all happen during that five-week period, wrapping up May 20th. And after that, we're going to move into analyzing the data so that we can report and present to you in, well, I was like, in the summer slash fall, because school is a funny time to do things. So we'll probably take a slight pause in those sort of depths of summer. So you want to give me one more slide, I think? So yeah, so ways to get involved, some, a lot of you are already engaging in various ways. But if you haven't had an interview yet, or you don't have one scheduled yet, so if you're already on the schedule, don't worry. An interview, and you still want to, please be in touch by the end of next week. We're doing the Board of Education interviews as, like, sort of in the same wave as the employee data and want to be able to assess it then. So if you are interested, be in touch, not mandatory. If you are someone who has opted no, that's cool too. If you'd like to join the project ambassador team, I can't see everybody, but Rick, if you're here, I owe you a kind of public apology for not sending you the right invitation. My apologies. You should have received the invitation going forward. You've already expressed this interest, so my apologies. But going forward, our next meeting is the 16th, so still a bit off. It's an opportunity to sort of see some of the same info, some different info, have a sense of what's going on. Encourage your participation, again, right, not mandatory. Be in touch with me or with LB or both of us if you're interested in either of these things. And then mostly, the rest of this is looking to hear your thoughts, your feedback, both you individually and anything you're hearing from other folks that you'd like to share back with us. And then I think my final slide says Q and A, so. Yeah.
Hey, Bree, it's Rick. No need to apologize. Look forward to the next meeting. You know, what would be really interesting is to overlay the responses. I don't know if they're the same questions that are asked to the staff as students, but it would be very, or at least similar, maybe targeted a little, you know, or worded differently. But it'd be great to overlay the responses and really see the difference. And moreover, the student, the standard deviation and the students' response. You know, I imagine them to be smaller, but that would be some great data to see back.
Yeah, so that's already built in for both the community and the students. We're using that same tolerance thermometer framework. There are some very slight deviation because we, I'd say like, I think 13 of the categories repeat for students. And then we have some slight differences because we want, they don't, there's some things like, we want them to answer about students who are parents rather than staff who are parents, right? Different, the places where their experiences diverge and they wouldn't really have a sense of what the employee experiences are like, but they would have a different look. But for the bulk of those, yes, we will be able to overlay and see both the score and the standard deviation as a comparison point. Yeah, thank you for asking. And this is, we're doing this and as much as possible creating things where we can do that kind of actually triangulation, because we'll have all three surveys by the end. Yeah, thanks, Rick.
You have, I hate to go back, but for the first day that you showed us, do you have the ends with those, or is that something we don't see?
For the, oh, like, what do you mean by, sorry, for which piece? So like, the end for most of these is the full response, right? It's not probably just.
Like the ends that answered the white people, the men, the do we have an end for each of those?
You're asking like who answered each, like what the.
Yes, the numbers around those.
I don't have it readily available, but we do have it, like, I could get that info if it was meaningful. The vast majority of folks filled this out, so it's a number closest to the total amount. But you're right, it's probably not 100%.
Yeah, let me, yeah. So there's three, there's three components to the survey. The other two are the indicators, and then there's a demographic profile. The indicators and this tolerance thermometer are required answers. So 100% of respondents filled out this part. In the demographics is optional, so we don't require folks to tell us their demographics. So when we, part of this, part of the full report, you'll get a demographic profile and you'll see, we have a couple of criteria to preserve anonymity. It has to be 10% or over 10 people. You'll be able to see ends of who filled out the survey by demographics, either identities or organizational hierarchy. So leadership, XYZ. But everybody filled out the tolerance thermometer, so all 300 of them.
Thanks, LB.
Thanks, LB. No, I agree with Rick. I'm really curious when we hear, see the kids, when the students fill this out and to see how that relationship reception is.
Yeah, thanks, too. Anyone else? Questions, comments, feedback from yourself or that you're hearing from the community?
I wonder how we as a board can support you in advertising this. Obviously, a larger, the larger the sample set, the better representative of the students and the community. So if, I don't know if you have experience with, you know, other school boards or other organizations and how they can help promote this, but if there's anything maybe we could do, let us know.
Yeah. LB, do you have specific thoughts for the BOE?
Yeah, for sure. That's, thanks for asking that question, Rick. That's really the biggest need that we have from this group as we head into phase two. You know, as, as we go out into the community, there's going to be all the variety of responses to projects like these. We have a communication person on staff, Liska, our colleague Liska, is putting together a pretty robust communication plan that involves a couple of videos, a student-facing video, and then a community-facing video. Lots of materials for the website, for social media. And then really, in a community like yours, because I grew up in a community like Scotia and Johnstown, it's very much by word of mouth and relationship. So if you can, you know, in the spaces that you occupy, the relationships that you have, if you can advocate and show public support for the project to try to demystify and help us be tentacles to the project in terms of a relationship, that, the stronger the trust in us as researchers and the value of the project, the more likely folks are to participate. So if you can signal boost anything that comes, as we start to unroll communications, websites and videos, if you can signal boost them in your channels, and then also just talk to people and ask them if they've heard about it. I think as part of the communications plan, we're going to print out posters and try to get them in the community, in the physical community. And so if you're a person that goes out to places and meets with people face to face, also just trying to push it and leverage your relationships is, you know, a little bit of that goes a long way.
We have access to be able to have some of those posters you take with us to other organizations that we're working with within the community so that we can hand them out or share them with our groups.
For sure.
Yes, and say, we can make sure you do. And if you, if you know you're going to want like more than a handful, just let us know if you need a bunch and we'll make sure you get them. Excellent. Thank you. I know I will need a bunch because I do work with a couple of service organizations, so. And I think that's true sort of for all of you, that you'll have different networks of parents and different networks of community members that you're connected to. And so asking folks to, right, like, make the connections where your connections are, where you're a trusted messenger. And right, like whether that's conversations or hanging posters, because I imagine that you're all, right, differently interwoven with the community. That's the nice thing about our board is we all have different avenues that we, some of us channel the same avenues, but we have different levels that we can be able to work on things. Thank you.
There's one piece that I want to make sure all of y'all are really crystal clear about because it might cause confusion if, if the folks that are responsible for elevating the project aren't clear. Is the, and Bree, you know, spelled it out really clearly, but I just want to boost it. Is this community, is the survey signup, it's like a gatekeeper so that we don't have someone forwarding the link to their cousin in, you know, Arizona who wants to weigh in or make a news story out of something they're not connected to. That's really what we're trying to prevent because we know that someone who doesn't like this kind of stuff, who, you know, for whatever reason, will, can very easily derail it from a political standpoint. And so we are trying to, and I love Arizona, no shame against Arizona, it's great people in Arizona. The community signup is, we're not going to necessarily go through and say, you're in the community, you're not. But when you sign up, we will send an individualized link to that email that you, that then is only for you, cannot be forwarded on. It really is an individual link to prevent the mass sharing of stuff and then the mass access of stuff. So part of what we need y'all to make sure that people understand is signing up gets you access to the survey. And we'll keep the signup open those two weeks that the survey is open as well. We're not trying to keep people out. We're just trying to protect the integrity of it being a closed community survey. So folks really need to sign up and say, yes, I want to participate. And we'll need folks to push the communications at that leg of the, of the journey as well so that then we can send an individualized link. If you have five folks in your family that are connected to Scotia, all five of you can take a link. It's not by family. But we need folks to sign up for that signup so that we can then send them an individualized link and protect the integrity of the, of the project. So I just want to make, I just want to reinstate that because that's a really important piece of it. Just by signing up, you're not done. And we do need you to sign up to participate.
Thanks for elevating that, LB. Any other questions, y'all? Anything else you'd like us to know?
What time of day are students taking their survey? Do you know, is it taken away, it's not taken away from instruction, or is it part of?
I think last I heard Karen or Susan Hoppin, if something has shifted, but I think the last discussion was part of extended homeroom potentially.
Yes, that we plan to give it all at once beginning of the day. And we have extended homeroom built into the schedule that carves a minute or two off of each period during the day. But it's, it's our best access to students all at once without interruption to their instruction all day.
Thank you.
Is that it, folks? If it is, I just want to say thank you to our two guest speakers today. We appreciate your time and all the effort you're putting into this and look forward to hearing from you and from our ambassadors.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We both apparently want to thank you very much. Thank you for having us. Please connect if you want to have any questions, want to get involved in an additional way. Our email address is right, we're just LB@tangibledevelopment.com and Bree@tangibledevelopment.com. So if you want either one of us, please connect. And thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, LB. Thanks, Bree.
Thank you, guys. Very helpful.
Susan, did you have additional comments?
No, that was really what we wanted to talk to you about this evening and get your feedback about. So thank you.
Thank you. Susan, has the the Board Association said anything? Are you guys having your superintendent conference this year?
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Is it virtual in person?
Right now, it's in person, but the one we do in March is one day of conference and then the second day is at the legislature.
Oh, okay. Just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on and get through our propositions and our agreements and the rest of our agenda. Number five is a discussion of a school bus proposition. True? Hey Drew, Drew, could you talk a little louder?
I'm trying to get him closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Go ahead, Drew. That better run down a microphone. It'll just take me one second.
Background music here. No, you don't want that.
I was going to suggest we switch spots here, but Karen will bring you a mic and that will help.
Ready?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. The bus proposition outlines the request to purchase the three new buses to replace two buses that we would basically hold an auction this year, as like we talked about last year, rather than doing a trade in to the bus vendor, we would do our own auction. Talking to other districts who tend to reap better benefits from that. Any proceeds from an auction will be used to reduce the debt going forward, replacing our debt service reserve and mitigate the debt payments going forward. The justification for the replacements are two of the buses are reached the the age and the body condition that we normally trade in our buses, which is ten years or a hundred thousand miles. And other factors are how long or the disruption of service by a bus being not on the road due to mechanical issues. We continue to replace buses with unleaded fuel rather than diesel. We started that process a few years ago due to the more stringent emission regulations that the government imposed. It's very tough to get a diesel bus back on the road and comply with all the emission regulations and it's more costly to be found. So we started that process a few years ago. The reason we're going up one net bus is to have a spare bus due to buses being out of service or the needs to go out of district. It's good to have an extra bus for that purpose. And we're increasing the capacity as outlined in the memorandum due to the continued projection of shortage of drivers. We need to increase the capacity of our buses to put more kids on the bus to make more kids on a certain run, because we just don't have the drivers to accommodate all the runs anymore. Therefore, we're going from sixty-five to seventy-two in this replacement program. There is no impact on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget as we go borrow the money in the summer of two thousand and twenty-two. Once we borrow the money, we'll be getting state aid. I did those calculations in the memorandum. So the impact on twenty-three, twenty-four budget will be a net twenty-one thousand dollars. I've also outlined the debt that's on our books right now for other bus props. And you will see that we have debt falling off. It's always good to bring debt and aid coming on to keep that continuing continuity of debt and aid. So you don't have a fall off or a gap. But most importantly, we found it prudent to continue with the replacement program. I believe several years ago, we went out one year without doing it and we paid the consequences with a lot of disrupted service with buses being off the road. So my objective is to get the board's consent to sign a letter of intent with the manufacturer does not bind us if the vote isn't positive and negative. But it's what they need to start moving, getting the orders placed and the manufacturing and such. We then start the process of bringing the necessary resolutions in the subsequent board meetings as in past years. Are there questions or concerns what I wrote up? Glad to answer them.
Yeah, just let's open it up for questions if anybody has any.
Hey Drew, it's Hal. As far as the auction goes, is it going to be open, a public auction? How are we going to advertise it? What's the plan there as far as that goes?
It'll be advertised and such, and I'll have more detail on that. We're finalizing the protocol that, but it would be open. So I'll have more for you on that in probably the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Drew, this is in left field, so don't laugh at me. Are there electric buses now or hybrid buses, alternatives?
There are electric buses that the Bethlehem, my colleague in Bethlehem just started that process. They purchased some electric buses totally with a nice third money. That's the only district I know of of my colleagues of around the area that have gone that way. But Bethlehem just did it last year, I believe, a few of them. We require a total transformation of our transportation facility, as you know, to get the charging stations and turnover. And without the nice sort of incentive, it's cost prohibitive. That's why Bethlehem painstakingly went through the process. And I can get you more on that. That's what I know as of this day, who's went into that foray was Bethlehem.
Just curious for the future, because
Will, will these be our first seventy-two passenger buses?
No, it's a good question off the top of my head. I've got the replacement schedule attached to your documents. Would that show capacity? It may be. Could I ask that question while we're going to seventy-two? That's why I wrote that they want to put more kids on these runs because we don't have the drivers.
I, I like the, I like the idea. And the reason I ask the question is simply for the the space at the the bus garage for it to be, you know, kind of parked in line. Will it cause an issue? Will we have to spend more money to add blacktop for it to park in a certain area? I didn't know if that was thought through, just just thinking, thinking about that.
Yeah, the process is I meet several times with my transportation people and we arrive at this through budget and status meetings. So and I looked at the replacement schedule, I took your packet. We, this will be the first seventy-two. We have sixty-fives, we have twelves, we have twenty-eights, we have wheelchair, we have thirty. So now this will be the first time, when I asked that question, the transportation that Clara wanted it to increase the capacity on these runs. And it will not affect the bringing in three buses and getting two will not will not impact the bus facility as far as parking or wearing care in our
And the sizes? The sizes won't matter then?
Squeeze any bus onto the road or, you know, you know, it'll fit.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If that will. Drew, you'll bring this to us next meeting then?
Yes, I'll bring the resolutions. The board will approve all the necessary steps to move forward and thank you, Dave.
If anything comes up, you know, we'll send a note around.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is to accept our second fiscal projections. I don't know, Drew, if you want to say anything before we
I love to talk a lot, but I won't talk a lot. And I'll watch your faces if you're falling asleep in my narrative, but basically we're through four months of the school year and six months of the fiscal year. And I'm looking at us being favorable compared to last year at this time by three hundred thousand or projecting a two-point-three million dollar surplus. And the year is one like I've never seen before with the COVID impact and and the job that faculty and staff are doing, coming to work and what we're doing to keep the the classroom staff is amazing, the bus drivers. But all that being said, fiscally, we're in a good position for reach our objective by year end. It's too early to give it more than two-point-three because a lot of money is tied up still on commitments that may not happen. But you've been with me for the past fourteen years, you know how I progress us through the year. And so the narrative has a lot of the the detail explaining where we are. Expenses are about four percent favorable. Revenue is is on budget. We will pick up ground hopefully in the next quarter, but I don't like to give up things that I have to take back in a projection. So I think some reason to detail and by and large, I think we're in good position, given what this district has gone through like other districts.
Thanks, Drew. Can I get a motion and then we'll open it if anybody has a question?
I'll make a motion that the board accepts the second fiscal projection for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions for Drew on that? Thank you, Drew. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good job, Drew. Thank you.
Thank you, Hal.
Well done.
Thank you. Next, we have a memorandum of agreement.
A motion to approve. Oh, Rick and I going at it. Go ahead, Rick. You started.
No, ladies first.
Motion to approve the memorandum of agreement by in between Scotia Glenville Central School District and Scotia Glenville Teachers Association.
Rick, second?
I'd be honored if I could second that, yes.
Thank you. Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Congratulations. So moved. Great news. Next is another memorandum of agreement.
A motion to approve the memorandum of agreement by in between Scotia Glenville Central School District and Scotia Glenville School Employees Local seven-six-six and Council six-six of the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees AFL-CIO.
I'll second.
Thanks, Kim. Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved? Another clapping. Next, eh, on our agenda is the incentive for substitute bus drivers.
I'll motion that, I'll motion that we approve the resolution for the incentive for substitute bus drivers.
Thank you, Rick.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved? Thank you. Another hand. Next is a resolution to accept and establish a scholarship. We have a couple of them, I think.
A move that we accept and establish Barbara Dyke's Memorial Scholarship and the Glenville Police Benevolent Association Scholarships as submitted. I'll second.
Any questions on either of those two? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved? Next, we have some donations. Can I get a motion?
A motion to accept the donation to be applied to the First National Bank of Scotia Scholarship. Also, I'll accept the, I'll motion to accept the donation to be applied to the Fred Fahy Memorial Scholarship.
I'll second.
Thank you. Whoever's taking the minutes can decide which one, the second first. Any questions on either of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved? Next is number fourteen. Next is the request to establish a leadership club at the middle school.
A motion to accept the request to establish a leadership club at the middle, at the middle school.
Thank you, David. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved? Next is the appointment of impartial hearing officers.
A motion to accept the appointment of impartial hearing officers.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved? Next is the Lowe's Home Improvement and Home Depot Authorized User List.
A motion to approve, a motion to approve the Home Depot and Lowe's Home Improvement Authorized Users List as submitted.
Thanks, Rick. Sorry, I jumped in on you. Second?
I would like to second.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any questions on these? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved? Next is communication.
I'll move communications, A through E, staffing, one through six, and the placement of students with disabilities as submitted. I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved? We all know to get rid of our placement of children in this with disabilities. Next are our internal claim auditor, our audit reports. I'm just going to go through them. If you have a question, just stop me. Payroll warrant number thirty-five. Got to keep, got to pull them up, sorry. Payroll warrant number thirty-six. Payroll warrant number thirty-nine. Check warrants, A thirty-four. H five. A thirty-seven. A thirty-eight. H six. If there are no questions, Drew, we're ready to move them. Give Drew a second. Is there any other business anyone would like to bring up? If there's no other business, we won't be having the hearing privilege of the floor, but anyone who is on the line and would like to address the board, please send us, please send us an email and join us at our February meeting. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing the journey? No, not Rick. He's on the beach.
It's warm.
Anybody abstain? So moved. Bye, everyone. Thank you. Looking forward to seeing everybody in February.